Tuesday, January 10th, 2017. This is the first South College Place City Council meeting of the year 2017 and the 1,772nd meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Peterson, would you say our pledge and our prayer?
Dear God and Father, thank you so much for the ability for us to come together and meet like this. We ask that you watch over and guide our decisions and be with us. Dear Lord, this is a time of season that is beautiful, but we also realize that it can be a time of danger. We ask that you watch over our residents, be with those, and we ask, Lord, that you would direct to us individuals that are in need during this time also. In Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's now time for our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council, please step forward, state your name and address. Seeing no one...
I'd just like to remind the council members, they can address the council as citizens, too.
No comment.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Composure, please. Consent agenda. You'll have opportunity to review the consent agenda items.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sherman.
I would say maybe the item 17003 would be moved down to the later amendment for discussion.
Is there a second to that amendment?
It's a privilege, most of them.
Okay.
He doesn't need any approval.
Okay. With that, we'll withdraw item 17003. Ordinance 17001, it's been moved and seconded to the consent agenda item. All in favor, minus item AB 17003, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes unanimously. With the presentation, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and introduce this. We are looking at another source of funding for our streets. We're on this forever search for funding, and this is part of that. TIB Transportation Improvement Board, which has funded a number of projects in our community, including part of our car project, has a new program that the legislature has handed them called Complete Streets. And if you look out at College Avenue, that will qualify as a complete street. It's got pedestrian facilities and has enough room for bicyclists along certain parts of it. We've got the path on North and Rose Street. Basic idea here is to encourage communities to develop streets that are good for just more than just vehicles. And in doing so, they're providing an incentive pot of money, as it were, through TIB to communities that are willing to get on board and pass ordinance. So I'm going to be presenting, really, this is just off of TIB's website. It's something they present. It's not in depth, but it gives you kind of a rough idea of what we're going to be talking about. Towards the end of this month or early next month, we'll be scheduling a workshop, and at that time, we'll be going through some of the implications and what it means to be a complete-streets community, if we still choose to do that around. So with that said, let me just give you a little bit of background. This is not a typical grant program. As you see in here, you basically have to be recognized by another entity and selected, and then they propose that you become a complete-streets recipient. You go through the process, put your project out there, and then you're successfully funded. So with that said, I'll go ahead and go through it. Again, I don't know, I think this is dead, so I'm going to go back over here. Talk over here.
So I gather the word "complete" is a verb?
I think it's an adjective.
Oh.
Yeah. It's just referring to the fact that, well, you'll see the definition in here. It's more than just for vehicles. So, the program was created in 2011 by the legislature, and it was funded all as early as 2015. That funding is for a biennium. TIB is administering that program. I don't think originally they were. I don't recall who was originally tasked with administering it. But 3.1 million, just over 3 million of it, is available for the 2015-2017 biennium. Fortunately, we're not going to be in time to be able to take advantage of that first shot of money, but over the next few bienniums, there'll be $14 million available. Not everybody will be going for this funding. There are some restrictions on it. You do have to pass an ordinance, and we'll go through some of that here. Here's the purpose of the Complete Streets program. That is to encourage local governments like ourselves to adopt ordinances that support complete streets throughout our community. They're looking for locally adopted jurisdiction-wide ordinances that are designed to provide, and this is our definition, safe access to all users, including bicyclists, pedestrian motorists, and public transportation users. The emphasis is not, is to get away from just vehicles, to make us a community that is able to provide transportation facilities for all users. And just, as you are aware, there's already in our community an effort to try and put together paths and transportation facilities outside of it in our jurisdiction, working with City of Wall Wall, the county, and so forth. So it ties right in in that regard, but this has to do with our own city streets. Okay? So this is, they see this as a powerful incentive to get folks to actually think about something besides vehicles and to spread the complete-streets ethic. Their intent again is to leverage the value, incentive value of pride, and this is not something to be taken terribly lightly. If you think about College Avenue and Rose Street and what we've been able to do with that, you walk that corridor right now, and there's a little bit of pride that wells up inside. This thing is beautiful. It works. It basically, I think, is going to attract a lot of value into our community. So they're trying to do that, and I think they can do that through encouraging the use of other modes of transportation. We have to be nominated in order to actually apply for funding through this program. And there's a number of different nominating tiers, and they have a slide on that as well. And they recognize that this program isn't for everybody. This is really for people that want to make a commitment to more than just vehicles in their jurisdiction, ensure that they include bicycles in their planning, pedestrians, and, you know, folks like Dolly Transit. We're doing much of that already anyway, so it's a pretty good fit for us. The process is you go through nomination, you submit a project, you're evaluated, and then you put together a work plan, and you basically sign off on that with TIB, and then they fund your project. These are folks that I believe are already signed up, and I believe, missing from this list, but I believe Wall Wall is already on here. I think Wall is a complete-streets city now. So we've already got precedent set in the Valley for that. They're going down that road. It fits their environment as well. So we would be adding ourselves to this list if we pass that ordinance. Again, we're not trying to do that tonight. Just a quick introduction to complete streets, and then we'll be taking this up at a later work session. Here's just a map of the eligible cities and counties, and most of them are clustered over on the west side, but there's a few of us here on the east side as well.
Especially near the Capitol.
Especially near the Capitol, yeah. Yeah, that's true. Here's their allocation of nominations, where they have what are called different tiers nominating entities. I'm not privy to all the interactions that they're ranking yet, but it appears that the higher you go up, the higher the tier is, the more important your project becomes, because Washdott's recognizing it, Department of Health is recognizing it. It becomes, it's ranked more highly with regard to your nominating entity. And then they show an example of what they're looking for, core number nominations, and then they do mention that they do want a number of small east-type city entities involved in those nominations. So they're trying not to give it just to the big guys. There's a distribution. There's a nomination form. It's on TIB's website. Any of us could look that up right now. And then what they're looking at is, for us to be nominated by an entity, we'd have to be a strong complete-streets policy. We'd have to have that in place. We have to be integrating that within our planning here in the city. We have to have modal plans, modal being modes of transportation. An ADA transition plan is typically seen as one of those in many cities, and at some point, ourselves will probably be involved in an ADA transition plan where we look at all of our facilities, public facilities, and fund and find a way to actually make everything ADA compliant. We're not there yet, okay? We made really good progress. In fact, all of College Avenue and Rose Street is now ADA compliant, or it should be by the end of this project. So there's that. There's also a bicycle plan. We have one that's old on the books. It's being updated, and I expect we're going to see that being updated through our Wall Wall Valley MPO. So those are in play right now. They're looking for community engagement on street design, making sure that we get out there and hear from our community members what it is that they want from each of these streets that we'll be looking at and designing. We have a couple on the board right now. We've got C Street. We can get funding for it this year. We're planning on putting in for TIB funding next year. Maybe Complete Streets will be part of that mix, okay? But we want to be listening to our community members. Same thing is true for Fourth Street. We're planning to start that construction, if all goes well, sometime even this year, if we can get to it, okay? Probably next year with the funding constraints that we have on us. Anyway, we need to have a history of building complete-street projects. We have a beautiful example of that right outside here on College Avenue, and then we need to have future plans for well-designed streets. So they're looking for all those elements. When they go to rank projects, they want to make sure that, this is the National Complete Streets Coalition, NCSC, that their policy elements, and the next slide will show what those are, are included, and they want to make sure all of them are included, or you get a medium score if you get eight or more, and lower, of course, if you only have a few of them. And then they look at plan integration, past project actions, future project actions, and outreach engagement. And based on this, they rank your projects. Here are the elements. You can hardly see them here, but you have to have, you have to show that your community has a vision for how and why the community wants to complete its streets. It needs to specify that all users, pedestrians, bicyclists, transit passengers of all ages, as well as trucks, buses, and automobiles, are included in that vision. Applies to both new and retrofit projects, so anything you're doing out there would be subject to taking a look at our complete-streets policy. It makes exceptions for specific, for anything that's specific, includes a set procedure that requires high-level approval of exceptions. In other words, somebody out on the street can't just decide they're going to get rid of the bike path, an inspector. I mean, it's got to go up through the ranks. It's got to be something approved either at the council level, at a committee level, somewhere we need to designate what level that's going to be, okay? And then it's adoptable, in this case, it's all agencies. That would be just our agency to cover our roads, and it directs the use of best practices, current best practices for road design. And this is how they break down, if this were all the different applicants, City 1, 2, County 3, City 4, and so forth, those at the top, who they award to are implementers. They're their top tier of granters, grantees that they've selected. They also have what are called initiators. Those folks are beginning the process and beginning to plan. These are not funded at quite the level as implementers, but they are given some funding to get started, okay? And then obviously, the last group doesn't get any funding, but they're on their way. So some misperceptions that they point out is that a policy is all you need, and they're looking for more than just a policy. They're looking for local commitment to this effort, to making sure that our streets do actually reflect a complete-streets vision. It's not just a prescriptive, a design prescription, oh, guess what, we're going to have sidewalks in all streets, we're a complete-streets community. That doesn't always cut it. Sometimes you may not want a sidewalk in a particular area for safety reasons, and in some cases, you may want more than just your typical five-foot sidewalk. You may want a 10-foot or 15-foot sidewalk in certain areas, depending on the use. So they don't want it to be just, we got sidewalks, thus we're complete-streets. They want us to actually take an honest, good look at it. It's not a mandate for immediate retrofit. Oh, guess what, we got complete-streets money? That means that we are required, and we shall go out and do this retrofit. No, they want community involvement. They want to make sure we take a look at it and that there's good reasons behind it. And then the last one is that it's always more expensive. I don't think it's always more expensive. Part of the fact is, if you are successful, you will be getting funding for the complete-street elements. In addition to that, we're already including all those elements in our designs anyway. So, yeah, some of the designs and some situations might be a little bit more expensive if we have to add or decide to add a bicycle lane, but in many cases, we already have enough street width in our current standards to accommodate those things. So that's kind of the picture. We got, I think, a few more here. Some examples, I think this is Redmond-Washington here. It gives you an example of what a complete-streets in their community looks like, with this trees, and you've got aesthetics, and you've got areas for bikes and pedestrians. It's for everybody, and I believe they probably have their transit vehicle down here. I'll pull out, showing use by all the different modes. It can be as simple as access to transit across the street, okay? How do we get to the bus stop from this side? Maybe we put in a ramp, okay? That's an improvement. That's in the venue or the vision of complete-streets. We're trying to make this work for transit riders as well. And then, of course, there's a shared pass. We have, and are accumulating more and more of those in our community, along Whitman and now along Rose Street as well. And then we have paved shoulders with repurposed lanes. This is more of a county application, but again, it's something we can look at in terms of if we have extra width along some of our roads. In many cases, a complete-street may involve just restructuring what we already have, okay, in terms of our standards. And again, that's something we can then explore more depth as we get into a work session. Aesthetics is also part of that, okay? So Complete Streets also wants it to look pretty, and we applaud that. Main streets, kind of like ours, except for not quite the same, obviously. We have a different look altogether, but again, they are looking at main street renovation throughout our community. So there's two different award levels. Your initiators, they basically, and I'm not clear, I'll be honest here, whether there are awards or, I don't think, I think these are the cap on the awards that they'll give us, because later on, it says that the actual award value is based on an adopted work plan. But those folks get pretty high in the ranking, our initiators, they only get, I think, a maximum of $250,000. Implementers could get upwards of that, towards $500,000, depending upon the needs of their plans. So you're being awarded to the level at which you're complying with their policy goals, and they're doing it by a pot of grant funding. Okay, the TIB award funding started January 1st of this year. This particular presentation was prepared a few months ago, so in that sense, it lags a little bit. $10 million in funds are to be awarded this fall. They must be used within three years, held in a locally restricted account, and they can't be renominated with an open work plan. Not quite sure what that means, but obviously, they're concerned about seeing the money being used twice or something. So here's the schedule that they had for us, starting last year. The nominations, we would have already had to have ordinance adopted at that point. There would have been a call for nominations. We actually asked about whether we could slip in at the last minute, and they kind of closed the door on that. So we weren't able to get in. But this next year, we plan, with council approval, to make that application, if that's something you want to go forward with, and then we'd be in line for possible nomination in 2018. I think, yeah, just going through the, we need to basically, as we do in this process, we need to be actually reaching out to nominating entities within our state. Okay, I'm not sure I can answer a lot of your questions. I'm kind of on the learning curve myself on this, but come to work session, we should have most of those answered.
Yes, sir. Back to sidewalks. Let's clear up the two things. Is the funding available to put in sidewalks in areas where streets already exist?
I don't know for sure.
And there are no sidewalks?
I don't know for sure. I would think that if we, I would think that if we could posit a good enough reason for that mode of transportation, we may find funding. I don't think our application would be as strong as competing applications which include other modes. So I think it would probably trail those kinds of applications.
Quite a few years ago, for the second point, we were working or talking about a sidewalk plan to protect some of the older blocks that don't have sidewalks and don't want them, there's no room for them. So could we maybe work together with a sidewalk plan, finally get that accomplished at the same time in our vision of complete-streets?
I think we should include that in our vision. If we move forward with the complete-streets policy and with an ordinance, we should include that. But then that's a good question. That's something I can ask and find out. At what level would they be willing to fund a sidewalk improvement-only project? So that's a good question.
Good, thank you.
Just a couple of comments. I think what it means when it says no renominations with an open work plan is, once you've got your money awarded, you can't get more until you finish the work plan that was approved. So I think we need to be careful that we don't put everything into our first work plan. Make sure that our first work plan is essentially our first phase, if you will. And then as we're preparing for our workshops, I think that we ought to also look into at what places and times do we want to allow for horseback riders? Because I see those in town reasonably often, and obviously, didn't think about it in Olympia, but I think it's something we should think about.
Oh, no, sir. I might be writing your horse story. That'd be rings in the street. Mr. Peterson.
Who are the nominators? Again, maybe. The top tier one are like Washdott, Department of Health, and then there's a number of private entities in the state as well that they've identified as... Have you reviewed the application or the... Yeah. Here's one of the ones that are obvious, Washington Bikes, Department of Commerce, Futuise, and then it goes all the way down to Community Transportation Association. So what we would do is take our car's project, say, hey, look what we've done. Again, here's our ordinance, here's our policy. Would you be interested in nominating us? And by the way, here's a work plan, maybe C Street or whatever it is we decide on. And you're correct, we want to be very careful how we frame those projects, because we want them to be large enough that we can attract the funding, not so large that the funding will not be enough. So that's a balance.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Want to come?
Thank you very much, Mr. Gordon. We have, we've moved the Agenda Bill 17003 to the action items. Ms. Strang, would you like to talk about it?
Sure. So this is the annual salary ordinance that we look for every year. The increases are either for government agreements or community agreements. Those 2% across the board for local works, local sports employees, and fire department plays and non-represented, with the exception of the administrator whose employment agreement specifically states a CPI. The police department does not have an increase included on this ordinance because we are still bargaining about that.
Questions from Ms. Strang.
The steps are just, they start at, so they want to get a step increase on our anniversary date. It's a 3% increase on our anniversary date until they top out of four years. This also includes mayor council compensation. We tried to consolidate and get everybody on one ordinance, so all of the compensation is together instead of three separate ones. So this is what it was for.
Mr. Peterson.
That's a pretty common step, increase. I know throughout, you are running to, you're running to people capping out in four, in four years. But I know, that's what we have here.
That's why we still do a cost of living increase.
Right. So it's a mayor or an evaluation increase. Yeah, okay.
Council member Dixon.
Yeah, just a little more information on the increase for compensation for the mayor, my council members for that matter. It's been suggested by legal advice in years past that if you do want to change it, of course, you can't lower the mayor's salary during the term of office, but you can do it anytime during their office, you can raise it. You can't lower it. And if you do want to lower the mayor's salary in sometime in the future, or raise council members' salary, it's been advised that you do it before the primary election, so that it doesn't get tangled up in politics.
Mr. Peterson.
You're testing my memory, but when I was at the city of Kennewick, I believe the law with respect to council members is, you can't vote for a wage increase during your current term. It has to be effective the following.
And so the complaint has always been, in this council, as it was staggered, that half the council was getting more than the other half. And so it always, and so finally, one council member's going, can't we reverse that and let those guys that are always ahead get behind? Because it was always staggered, four here and three there.
It is imperfect that way, but you can, you could do it forward-looking so that there's an across-the-board raise at some dates in the future. But you'll always have the stagger otherwise.
Yeah. And if you do it in the middle, it's always going to affect only four of them or three of them.
Correct.
In this council, whenever you do it.
So, yeah, that's a good catch, but, and I don't know the rule for the mayor, sorry.
Then two years later, they catch up.
Right.
Do we have copies of ordinances, number 95, I need six, five, four.
I can get them right.
You can see them, exhibits here.
I didn't include them in the paper.
Basically, what did they cover?
Well, the 90, the 2901s, those were the mayor and the council. I'm very sure the council didn't change. The mayor changed from 800 to 1500. The other ordinance was just last year's salary ordinance, which is in the same format as that, 2% less, except for the P E is the same.
So basically, this one is consolidating all of that into one.
And we'll have to update this ordinance when we complete negotiations with the police department.
You got to change it again.
So it's ordinance 17-001. Yeah. Make sure I'm on the right page here. Then I would move that we approve ordinance 17-001.
Council member Selby.
I just had, I just noticed that we still have the name of our old city attorney. Okay, I second the motion.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Oh, you second it? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposing sign? Passes unanimously. Ordinance 17002, Mr. Zatello.
Thank you. Thank you. This item was brought before council the last meeting, and it's the creation of Economic Development Tourism and Events Commission, so in addition to Chapter 2.3 in the municipal code. And just changes based on council input from the last meeting is putting in the wording of or when listing the Bowden members and what vocation they should have. Also, for the non-Bowden members, ex officio, it was noted as non-Bowden within there. as non-Bowden within there. One notation that was taken out of here was that they would be the folks who would grade the lodging tax because upon research for non-charter codes, cities, and our makeup, it looked like it wouldn't be congruent at the moment. So as far as this commission grading the lodging tax as of right now, that was taken out, and they'll be addressed when we get to the lodging tax section under administrative reports. But beyond that, those are the changes from the last go around.
Questions for Mr. Rizetello?
Maybe I missed this, but kind of what sort of recruitment process for fulfilling this committee, commission, I guess?
Well, I would imagine should this commission be authorized by city council, we would put out notices on the city website. Also, the newsletter goes out with the water bills asking for members. And I've been meeting with business owners as well, so I've been informing them that this was something that we were looking at. So that would be how we would recruit.
I just want to add, just want to add to Michael's comment that this won't be new for many of our commercial leaders in the area. They've been on a board and a committee like this before, so kind of get things back in here. They seem very excited about this.
Ms. Selby?
I was a little concerned, I guess, about the giving it a budget of zero because, it says budget impact zero on our agenda bill. And it does seem like, I support this, but it does seem like realistically, there is going to be a little bit of expense involved. We talk about occasionally publishing things in the paper, in the ordinance, and, you know, we'll be staffing the meetings, I assume, making copies, you know. So I don't know if that's just included in general fund or how we deal with that, but it does seem like there should be a little tiny bit of a budget for it.
Mr. Peterson? Just add to Melody's comment. There should be a little bit of travel involved in there because I'd like to see this committee go to La Grande and figure out how the city paid for half of the new market. It was a multimillion dollar donation for the city. And figure out where they got the funds to do that. I actually participated in a program there last weekend, and I was, they gave me a tour, the owner gave me a tour, and it was amazing. He told me, I didn't understand how the city got involved, but I want to know how the cities, I know they're already, but I know, I want to understand how cities get involved in helping, you know, build these kind of things.
To address a couple of the items, as far as the publishing costs, that was a little bit of an oversight on my part, but that is within the general fund. So as far as the specific line, I per se, that's what I meant as far as the zero. As far as travel, that is something we could do in there. The way we did that in City of Colfax, for instance, is a lot of folks that were in the Economic Development Commission are actually sponsored by the local utility, and they help cover some of the travel expense. So typically, once you get commissions like this off the ground, the organizations that serve community are more than long to help pay for them.
Develop their own budget.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Do I have a motion?
All motion to approve ordinance 7-002, Economic Development Tourism and Events Commission.
This is a motion. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
T-Mobile lease agreement, Mr. Hartwig?
T-Mobile has antennas on their tower, and they're trying to improve their service in this area. And so they applied for a billion per bit, and when it got to my desk, I said four hundred. And they were adding antennas. So I contacted them and said, this opens up the contract. And we went round and round on negotiations, and I took the number of antennas and what we were charging originally, and how many they were adding to already. And I came up with $900. They wanted to give 500, and we said no. And we went back and forth, and finally we ended up with mine. So that will make them the utility that pays the most right now for a month for access to our tower. So...
I thought we were maxed out.
They didn't. They're just adding some antennas, and that's where we got it.
That's what I mean, for space.
No. For the antennas we were forming. And the bandwidth of these communications is so narrow, that they can almost be right next to each other and not interfere. So anyway, so $900 a month is good revenue for the city. I talked with Sarah, and that will go to CE, and so that'll help with budget and so forth. So I would recommend approval of the lease.
Mayor, second? Any further questions for Mr. Hartwig?
I'll ask you, how do utilities around the tower, like what's currently spaced out with?
We got all the major providers, and then UCL, which is basically a subsidiary now of Horizon, and then I'll talk to my new associate, Lilian Taylor. So I think we got about six or seven.
You sure?
I'm not an attorney, but reading through this amendment, it's clear to everyone that this 900 is on top of the 15 number that they originally paid.
Yes.
Okay, because, yeah, it only addresses that. Thank you.
They tried to put in there at one point that this would, they would not be subject to any more increases either in the addition.
Tricky.
Is the base amount that they pay previous to this?
Nothing. It's 15. So do you increase that?
That gets increased 15%, I mean, 3% per year.
Okay, and we do.
Yes. And they're set on five-year terms, so this one will end in 29.
Any further questions? Do I have a motion?
I approve of the T-Mobile lease agreement, AB17006.
It's been, is there a second? It's been seconded by Ms. Sherman. All in favor? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you very much, Mr. Hartwig. Strategic plan and contract, Mr. Rizetello?
Thank you, Mayor. Since November, we were looking for organization to help us do the strategic plan with city council, and then some community members and city staff. So the mayor and I began to look for consultants who do this, and we received two such proposals back after evaluation based on work plan, cost, and the milestones and approach. We are of the recommendation to recommend Intermountain Investments to do this project. Strategic plan was called out within the presentation for fiscal year 2017. For $25,000 a proposal as it stands from Intermountain is between 12,000 and 18,000.
Questions for Mr. Rizetello? Ms. Sherman?
I have a question. I have a statement. I've worked with Lawson and his team through another organization, and it's fantastic. So I'm looking forward to working with them. That being said, I did notice some typos in the dates, I'm assuming, because it's for this year, not January or last year. Okay.
Mr. Dickerson, you probably mentioned it, and I read it earlier, it remind me, does the expenditure is only when they come in and get hired by the hour?
Yeah, correct. And it's, right now, the contract is set at the, between the 12,000 and 18,000.
Right, that's just budgeted, but it may not cost anybody to them hiring them by the hour.
Yeah.
Further questions?
Ms. Sherman?
I motion to approve the strategic planning contract with Intermountain Impact Investments, Action Item AB17007.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes unanimously.
Resolution 17001, Mr. Rizetello?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to formally adopt via Resolution 2017 Legislative Agenda. In looking at the past minutes of city council, there was a legislative agenda that was preliminarily included with agenda packets from Ingram Administrator Jackson. However, looking through records, I didn't see anything where it formally adopted. And I know from work over at Colfax, it makes a statement to have a resolution tied to the legislative agenda. Additionally, since that time, the information sheets from Association of Washington Cities, and additional information on how this fiscal year is going to pan out, has become available. So I basically created a flyer to try to incorporate the information that was on the earlier legislative agenda as well as the newer information.
Questions for Mr. Rizetello?
I approve of the 2017 City College Police Legislative Agenda.
There's been seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further questions?
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Unanimously.
Spyglass Snapshot Audit Agreement, Mr. Rizetello?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This item is from a company called Spyglass Snapshot, and they essentially analyze organizational telecom billing statements as well as plans and billings to identify either savings or identify if there were overbillings. Because they have professionals on staff, attorneys, financial analysts, that do this all the time. If they don't find savings for us, there's no cost. If they do find savings, there is a cost to it. Where basically, whatever savings is on a monthly basis, it would be basically 12 times they had to represent the year, basically. So that would be the case with us. I've inquired with other cities, including Des Moines, Ellensburg, Winnie-Achee, Sunnyside, Seidrow, Wally, Arlington, and Burlington. They're very highly recommended, and they identified some savings and some revenue form as well. So this looked like a win-win for us, so that's why this is before you tonight.
Mr. Peterson?
So an example of this would be, the city has a contract to buy pipe at a certain amount, but will be built differently, or there's a conflict. Can you explain this in a couple of scenarios?
So basically, this has to do with our telephone billing, essentially. If the plan we're on is the most cost-effective, are there truly dead phone lines out there that no one's aware of? Because at Colfax, we have similar audit done, and it would shock you how no one knew these lines still existed, wasn't called out yet, was still being charged.
I second that. This is telecom, and this is not an overall audit of any wider than that, or the school that you were in.
Correct.
Okay.
Just telecom.
Other questions?
Does telecom include any of that?
In this case, it is just the phone, essentially.
All motion to approve Item AB1709, Spyglass Snapshot Audit Agreement?
Second?
It's seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes. So start with introduction here on this agenda item. For the last couple of meetings, we had the guilds who run the elementary, here's along here, expressing a concern over parking in their areas, as all the cars were dead. And we've also received a little bit of feedback from lots of folks in terms of, can we look at that again, make sure that what we have in terms of our design in particular, the parking, is what we really want to see. So what I'm going to do here is kind of go through a little bit of the history of what we've done, give you an idea. Some of you weren't here when those original decisions were made, it's a long project, kind of give you a background. And then before then, I'd like to also go through the presentation we had made most recently before this came up again, where we brought forward some issues. It's a good summary of where we've already been. So this is a balancing act. We have a, because of the 10-foot sidewalks, we don't have as much right-of-way to deal with, to be in with. And then we're talking about cramming and parking and nothing turns and everything else on the way. So it's a tight balance in some areas, not south of Town Street, but certainly the north of that. So I'll go through that. And then I think we'll entertain questions, and you'll have the opportunity to decide whether you want to move forward with a study to look more closely at what our options might be.
We began the process, I want to give you a quick, and I gave you a little bit of a review here in the Agenda Bill. Incidentally, Exhibit 1, the date is wrong, it should be March 26, 2012. That was the date when we first approached the council at that time with a number of different options for how to configure College Avenue. And they ranged from getting a right-of-way, so we could just use everything we needed and put everything in there, to stay within our right-of-way, but eliminating parking, or maybe having a middle turn lane, or keeping all the parking and possibly slowing down traffic. We tried to give the full gamut of solutions that were available at that meeting. And council kind of wrestled with it a little bit and decided just to proceed with what we already had on the plan, and to move forward towards trying to accommodate as much parking as possible, but still trying to also leave College Avenue pretty free for free-flowing traffic. So it's a compromise. So you can go back through and look through that in terms of the agenda items itself. Then, in January, early January of 2013, we contacted about 120 different property owners up and down the corridor, just to get input from them in terms of the project. It wasn't focused entirely just on parking. It was focused on anything that they would have a concern with respect to our proposed project. We didn't receive at that time any comments on parking. We did receive 14 comments, but they really didn't have anything to do with the parking issues. It could be people at that time weren't really understanding what the implications were to design. But in any event, at that time, we didn't have any feedback. And then earlier last year, the guilds, as well as a number of other property owners, and mostly a lot of their clients came forward and said, hey, we and mostly, a lot of their clients, came forward and said, hey, we would really like you to revisit the parking issue on College Avenue. We used to have one parking stall right out in front of our business, that's no longer available, it's further down the street. It's not easy for, especially for their elderly clientele, to disembark and get to their hair salon. So what we did, what council asked us to do at that time, was to go take a look at it, see what there was, kind of research where we've been, and we did that, put together a report. That report is also in here. That would be Exhibit 3, March 28, 2016 Agenda Item Study. And so you can take a look at that, I'm sure you've already reviewed that, it gives you an idea of where we've been. Now, the presentation that I'm going to show you in just a few seconds here, really summarizes what's in that report. So hopefully, most of those elements are already up here. Before I do that, I did want to show you, and I don't know how well you can read this, I'll use my cursor, but these were the options at that very first meeting, we went to council, and we kind of laid out some of the options that we had, and how we wanted to configure the whole project. And basically, we talked about eliminating parking, okay? We talked about striping it differently now, but going towards eventually no parking scenario, so that we could move in that direction if we had to. We talked about alternate routes, like possibly having one-way traffic, one road, and background half-street, maybe another way, and we had a bunch of different options for that. We also looked at no left turns, option 1D, let's just get rid of the left turns, okay? As an option. And then we also looked at one-way traffic. And again, that's an alternative route idea. The other option was, again, was just to buy more right-of-way. Problem is with that, is we probably would end up buying a lot of our different commercial entities out of business, because there's still tech in on that right-of-way as it is. So those are what we looked at originally. And again, after this, we had public comments, okay? Received 14, nothing on parking. And then, we were approached by our property, or some of our business owners, later on in March 14. So this is the presentation that came out of that, and this reviews that study that's in your packet there. I haven't changed anything, so some of this will be a little dated, but it just gives you an idea of what we showed at that time. Incidentally, this is not our street light. At that time, we didn't have them bought yet, and this was stolen. The picture was stolen from City of Wall Wall Street Lights. So we have better ones now, more attractive. Okay, here's the, here's a project, starting up on Rose Street, and just, in this particular slide, I'm just showing the different kinds of parking along the corridor. There's, this is a merge transition area, as you get off of Myrtle Road, there's no parking up in here. There's no parking through here, but there's a center turn lane for access to businesses along there. Rose Street is not quite the issue as College Avenue is. As we head south from Rose Street, we have parking with two lanes on, all the way down to Whitman Drive. Most of these intersections, all these intersections up into Whitman Drive are just T-intersections, they don't go all the way through. So it works pretty well right there, we haven't had any real complaints in terms of how that works. Between Whitman Drive and 4th Street, there's no parking. There used to be, we got all rid of it, so that we wouldn't have a problem with kids starting out from behind parked cars. So that's the university block, no parking there. And then, between 4th and 10th Street, and the ones that we're talking about tonight are specifically more 6th through 10th, maybe even 8th through 10th, but in that area, we have parking with two lanes of traffic. And then we have those center left-hand turn lanes in the middle of the intersections. And then, further to the south, we have parking on both sides with a center turn lane, we have more right-of-way in that area. So we're able to accommodate a center turn lane, plus parking in addition to the two travel lanes. So it kind of gives you an overview of where we're looking at in terms of how we park along College Avenue. Okay, let's see. Okay, what I wanted to point out here is this area in particular, this is where these businesses that we're hearing from, this is where we're seeing most of the parking issues, right in this one area here, between, more like south of 6th through 10th. Now, some considerations that we brought up at the time is safety. We had Keller do studies on the intersection configurations, and these considerations are drawn for the most part from their studies. 4th to 10th Street intersections meet warrants for safety. TWLT means two-way left-turn lanes, intersections increase safety. And the point is, if you get people out of the traffic, there's not as much rear-ending going on, okay? It's just safer in terms of the way the street works. So that was their first point that they made. They also were concerned about capacity and delay. And to get rid of the left-hand turn lanes, apparently, according to their modeling, and that's something that we would revisit under a new contract with somebody else, is that they would see, we'd see significant delays up and down the corridor if we got rid of those left-turn lanes. Now, as I delved into their study, it turns out that the delays are, for whatever reason, the way the modeling works, based on the cross-street delays. Those, that's where they get the real hit, not necessarily north-south, which is interesting. Okay, the current approach preserves our mid-block parking, but it does sacrifice it towards the intersections, that's why there's concerns. I'm sorry. There's limited right-of-way. We opted not to purchase more right-of-way, and actually, we probably would have gone from a 13 and 1/2 to $15 million project, to maybe a 20 to 25, I don't know. It's a large number, the right-of-way would have been prohibitive. And then, there's also private parking opportunities along the corridor, and we'll show you some of those, so you can take that into consideration as well. And then, restricted the intersections, it would increase on-street parking, that's what we're being asked to look at. There are some concerns with sight visibility, if you get a car too close to that corner, and you can't see around the corners, it still may push it back a ways. But that's, it would increase parking. The marking that we do put down, and currently what we do have now, and it's kind of semi-permanent until the next time, so we have the, we just have the issue with, we have old striping, then we have new striping. We change it, it's going to last for a while, it's going to look kind of ugly for a little bit. So those are considerations to look at. And now, what I want to do is look at what we have in terms of off-street parking by our businesses, the opportunities they have to park their own traffic, if that's the road we want to stay with, because that's what we've done before. So at 4th Street, this is 4th Street here, here's College Avenue. We have the gas station, and we have university parking here. We've got, what, it used to be Sterling Bank, what's that called?
Umquah.
Umquah.
Yeah, and here's another university facility. Here's the project going through, superimposed over it, and, oops, I'm sorry. Really, we don't have a lot of issues here, it's almost the same, same thing as what we had before. So there's really not a lot of change at 4th Street, and we haven't heard a lot of complaints there either. The biggest complaints or concerns we have are Valley Transit trying to park near the post office. Right now, they share, it's first come, first served for them, as well as everybody else. If we were to isolate that just for them, then that would eliminate a lot of parking for your regular folks coming to the post office. So we've left it like that for now. Okay, this is at 6th Street, just down here. Here's the old road going through, you can see. We narrowed the road, 6 to 8 feet, about 4 feet on both sides to accommodate the sidewalks. And here's what we end up with, you can see the project underneath there. And we introduced those left turn lanes. You can see how that, that has an impact on parking along each of these areas in front of the businesses. We don't want to get too close to the curb anyways, but still, there might be some parking out here that would nor, wouldn't, that is no longer there as a result of those left-hand turn lanes. So then, we also looked at, I'm sorry, this is the area again, that gets impacted, the area in red. We looked at where some of these businesses could park their customers' vehicles. At Blue Mountain Credit Union, they have quite a bit of parking there, they're pretty well parked. Baker Boyer Bank has a pretty good-sized parking lot, so they're pretty much, they're not relying on that on-street parking. The retail, here, just behind, same thing.
While you're on this slide, could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Everywhere I go, I ask the businesses how they, and what they think of the street, how they feel. The people at Blue Mountain Credit Union are under the impression that they were told traffic could turn left heading north.
Yes.
Into their, their drive-through. Now, can they still do that?
Yes, what we did is, if you have a double yellow line, you can't cross it, it's a median, but if you striped it intermittently, and if we, I believe it's already been that way, if not, we're going to have it done that way, because we committed to them, that which are-
So they can cross two lanes, the turn lane and the, and the through lane.
We striped it, we looked at that and said, okay, let's make sure the striping legally allowed them to do that. And so, it's a little hard to check to make sure, but when the snow melts, we'll take a look.
It's dashed.
It is dashed, okay. I thought I checked that, but, and all of them should be that way, so that everybody can make those kind of turn payments. Yeah, that's a good point. Okay, so that, that is 6th Street, it's pretty well, let's go back just for a second. These are residential, here, in here, they don't really have that need for on-street parking. So as far as the commercial, 6th Street seems to be doing pretty well. And that's not where we've heard all the concerns item.
I have a question on that too, Robert. So obviously, the parking has changed, like specifically within this block across the street from the old Baker Boyer Bank building. And I noticed when the project was still going, and I don't know the last time that I've been through there, the cars are still parking there. What kind of enforcement do we, I mean, are we enforcing that? Or, I mean, are there signs that say no parking? Is it going to be yellow stripe?
It's, it's all done with paint. The painting is the enforcement area, or notification. When they put, well, you can't see it there, but the end of that red going through the curve, there's a line, that indicates that's, you can't park toward the intersection from that place. The property owner has been parking there a little bit, I've noticed that. We'll make contact with them.
Yeah, they're not the only place, we actually have seen some Whitman Drive headed to the west as well, where they were parking almost correctly in the light, traveling, and it seemed like an obvious place not to park, but we're, I think we're still trying to find a way to put a parking sign up there.
A little bit.
Yeah, we just have limited right-of-way there as well, so. Anyway, some of it, some of it, you hope it's just getting used to the road, you hope. Okay, there's also 8th Street, this is one of the ones, you'll notice Lemon Tree right here. And also, well, I guess we have down here is another commercial building. On 9th Street, the, these are areas that are available for parking here, this is the apartments, they already have their parking in place, okay? And we've got Wayne's Auto Repair, that's now become that little convenience store on the corner, and they have some parking there as well. The Lemon Tree, the guilds have some area that they could use for parking, I believe they are starting to use that now. They have entry right off of here. Okay, this I wanted to show, and I put it in the original presentation, because it shows where their, this is currently where their spot is. If you remember, they were concerned that, I had represented, there was only one, there was a spot in front of their, their business. Well, in fact, it's not in front of their business, it was to the side, this is the only spot on that side of the road between 8th and 9th. And that was the point, is you have a, you have a spot, but it's not real close. You know, it's, it's not a long distance, but for somebody who's struggling with mobility, maybe it is a long distance, so.
And they were complaining that this parking spot got moved from in front of their building to back-
Right, well, let me push this little button here, and you'll see where it was there. Okay, so you can see the difference.
Right.
And that was the concern. And obviously, right now, and part of the problem is, we've already, we've already decreased the width of the road anyway, so now we're down a whole 8 feet or so, 6 to 8.
How many feet is that?
What's that?
How many feet is that difference?
90, I think.
I think it was 90 feet, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's a, you know, it's a good, it's a distance. Okay. This commercial building here, they have very limited parking, and in fact, we allowed them to actually change their driveway here, so that they could actually drive out through here. Wasn't exactly the best, but they had been doing that anyway for years, and so there's very little other way to accommodate it, so we've allowed them to do that.
And that's 9th?
Yes.
That's a concrete place.
Yes, that's what it, yeah.
But that's what it used to be.
Yeah, I think it extends more, so. So that's what we have here, I haven't really addressed this, there's, obviously, it's not a developed lot. In the future, parking will be addressed if somebody comes in there. So we move down to 10th Street. Actually, this is just on the other side of 9th Street, Classic Chassis, the, the-
Car wash.
Car wash, excuse me. And they have parking for what they need, I don't think I've ever seen any real issues there, maybe occasionally. And then the Empire, the Empire was also concerned, because they used to have a lot of folks drop off their mowers right out in front of their-
Yeah, and that was all parking.
Yeah, it was all parking, and almost to a fault. And in fact, we recently had the post office, if you recall, parking right in the middle here, and it was forcing all the traffic out around them. So obviously, traffic really only can park, we started the white line here, and they have a driveway here anyway. So they've been restricted. However, we're working with them to make sure that they can park along here, and their folks can walk in, or just deliver their lawnmowers directly into their service area. This is also area that they have available for parking, if they would choose to use it. So there's some room there as well.
They regularly block one lane of 10th there.
Do they?
With people loading and unloading.
Yeah.
And sitting there for quite a while.
Yeah.
It's a low-traffic area, but-
We try, we try to, especially now, when we do developments, make sure they have adequate parking, so nothing gets into the right-of-way. And that actually, that's actually informing some of our discussions with the university too, as we move forward. But it doesn't always work. And so, they've traditionally been using this whole area for their offloading. They possibly could, I'm not sure what the, I mean, this is pretty tight through here, but it kind of is what it is. Okay? Okay, there's more parking back in this area, for, I don't think it's the same lot, though, this would be for somebody else. This just shows you again where they had parking before, in front of their facility. We have some more parking here at these multifamily areas that they can use, so we do have probably more adequate room for parking there as well. And then this is the storage unit area, and they don't really have a strong need for parking, but they do have access area for vehicles coming in and out. Okay? So that's 10th Street. And that, then after that, the right-of-way widens considerably, can you see this here? Where we have a middle turn lane, we have parking on both sides, and the issue goes away. Okay? So it's really from about 8, maybe 6, but mostly 8 to 10, just those two intersections, maybe in 9th, turning over to the next there. Okay, so summary, we have a huge loss in parking stalls, especially since we took out the university. If you really want to count what we had before, none of them were really that accessible in terms of distance, but about a third of them went away, a little over a third. 4th to 10th Street, we see a parking stall reduction of 74 percent, 53 stalls to 19 stalls, there's not a lot. So part of the discussion, maybe not for this study, but maybe for the future, is what do we do about parking if we want to provide relief outside of College Avenue? Are there some areas the city could purchase for parking lots? I mean, that's something that City of Wall will, I think, contemplate from time to time. Maybe we might need to start thinking about that as well. Average intersection delays without those left-hand turn lanes, in 2012, 19 to 14 seconds. If you don't have them, they're going to creep up to 40 seconds of delay. Again, my understanding that is from the corner, the side streets, not from up and Average intersection capacity without those, you see your capacity for that intersection to pass cars conveniently reduced by about 25 percent. The delay without those turn lanes increases beyond 60 to 100 seconds, so now you've got people waiting an awful long time. And part of that is, when people get impatient, they start to take risks, and there's some fallout from that as well. Anyway, this, these results are from Keller, when they did our traffic studies for us for the project, but we have the opportunity to go back and revisit it. This is a balancing act between level of service in terms of traffic flow and parking, and in this case, making sure that we have a spin-foot wide sidewalks, which they're in, they're not going to change. So what we're asking for is direction from council, if you want us to go out for an RFP. I've listed the different things that we would look at there, including signal timing, because that will play in to how that corridor works, and whether or not you want to move forward with another study from a different consultant.
Discussion. Ms. Hill?
I have a few thoughts. One is-
One is, I think part of it is getting used to the new system, and part of it is education. I think people don't necessarily understand, for example, that they can cross a dashed yellow line and not a solid double. I mean, they learned that back when they took their driver's license when they were sixteen, but most of them have forgotten. And I've also heard some confusion about the parking striping of, you know, is that parking? Is that not parking? I'm not quite sure why the confusion is there, but I think it might be helpful for us to do a little bit in some of our newsletters of just, you know, hey, this is how our cool new street works. And reminding them of things like Mike has said, that, you know, there is parking around the corner. That's what I tell my kids. The one bit of wisdom I've learned throughout my life is there's usually parking around the side. I don't have a lot to offer. The other, the other thing that I think is causing an issue right now, of course, is we're learning a new system when you can't see any of the lines anyway because of all the snow. So I think we need to make sure that we don't do any of the traffic counts or anything until, and I would recommend at least a month or two after the snow is gone. So the people, and after, because about the time the construction got done, the snow hit, and so people just aren't used to it. And I think any traffic counts done too soon will not be particularly valid. So I think it's something that's worthwhile looking at, but I think we need to not go too fast in looking at it.
What's another piece?
Well, I have a different viewpoint, I guess. We rezoned that stretch, College Avenue to be mixed commercial residential, and then we took away all their parking. Yeah. So I'm not sure what that was all about. I personally, and the feedback that I'm getting from the citizens, from Sixth to Tenth is nothing but confusion, is an obstacle course with snow or not. I think we need to do a study to see about getting rid of the left-hand turn lanes or whatever for maybe Sixth through Tenth, or Eighth through Tenth, or. I've gotten to a point before the snow where I just drive straight down the road, and I'm going across solid yellow, solid white, I don't care, I'm just going to get it there, you know? I think it, and I guess the point here too, is it's great to have public, you know, input, and we did that. We went through all these steps, and things look good on paper, and you can give a public comment, but when you actually put it all together and you see it, you're now dodging cars where there's this one white stripe that's twenty feet long, or a car, I guess apparently in the park. It's just a lot of frustration in that section that you highlighted there right now. And it truly is, I call it, because people are going to the dock car rally, you know, to get through there. And it's just, I don't know, it, and I'm not sure how many people are turning left on Ninth and Eighth into, a lot of stuff going on down at the college, people going to Wawa, people going to schools, it's just, I'm just really, there's a real sense out there of frustration with that section of that road. And I think it's okay for us, after it's done, to take a look at it and say, is there something we can do better to address this issue? Beautiful street. I agree, people like it. I love it. That, this area that was a problem right now, so.
Just going to close?
Clear light?
So, technically, that was before me, so you jumped in the gun, but the expenditure for having a study done is twenty-five thousand? That's your estimate? And what would be the estimated cost of striping, restriping, everything kind of off the top of your head?
Kind of depends on what we use. I think we'd be inclined to go with something more permanent, what we have. I don't know. It could be, it could be as little as, what? I don't know, five bucks a foot or something like that. It's kind of hard to estimate. If it's just paint, it's not as bad. If we go for the plastic, you know, E-treated type of application, it's pretty pricey.
Yeah, okay. So negligible perhaps, depending on what we go with?
Yeah, I mean, if you're going to restripe, again, when we're looking at, when we're looking at the study, we'll be looking at it holistically because what happens downstream of an intersection may affect a little bit what happens upstream. So we're actually going to have to do a model of what's going to happen. Again, it'll be checking what Keller did. In other words, they're going to do their own study and make sure.
Are they reusing the same data or are we collecting new data?
Well, I think we're going to be collecting new data, especially when, because we have a new road. And again, I think Councilman Selby's comments are well taken. We need to make sure, not only do we wait until the snow dissipates, we have to make sure we're taking those counts at a time when we've got a lot of kid traffic out there too, as far as their student vehicles, because that's going to be important.
Sometimes between the snow melt and end of school year.
Yeah. And that'll affect also how the lights are timed, because we want to, we want to time those lights all the way through the corridor. So it gets a little bit more expansive. Twenty-five thousand is on the high end, and we may, hopefully, will not end up using all of that. But there may be some things that we want to take a look at that require more study.
Yeah. One thought I have is that frustration to a change, which is perhaps maybe a little bit inconvenient or hard to adapt to, is going to be highest like immediately after that change, right? So I guess kind of my thought would be like, you know, this might be a good idea, just maybe in a few months after people have some time to really get kind of familiar with that. Just my thought.
Ms. Silk?
I have a few notes. One of the things, and I don't know, maybe Robert will address this later, what you were talking about, Lauren, with the commercial zone, one of the things that we talked about at a meeting several months ago was the fact that part of the zoning, I think they're supposed to account for their own parking and set back like the new ABC. So it's not supposed to necessarily be the street parking. I understand what you're saying, but just, is that?
Yeah, I think what Lauren's getting at is we have older established businesses that didn't have those requirements.
Right, right. But separately, I think, like as these older homes, if they go away or someone wants to rebuild, that was part of that plan. Okay. And that, okay. And then as part of this, you have built in here, or as part of this RFP, you're talking about doing the signal timing, which irritates me, the lighting, or the timing, not this. But is there a way to have that separated out? Like, or does that, is this all encompassing? Because, I mean, my third line here that I wrote down was, what are the conversations that you've had with the Lemon Tree owners? Is it just what they've done here, or have they come in and has this been talked about? And I think that, you know, several months ago, however long ago we were talking about this, when we talked about that back parking lot, obviously, that was an expensive feat for them to either pave or get that ready, but they do have that property available. So I am curious to know where those conversations are at with them, based on what we know with what we were doing with the street.
We have not had, I think it's probably a month, two months ago now, maybe a little over that, we did have a conversation, but it was very, very, very heated. And subsequently, there's quite a few other very, very heated conversations, to the point where I'm not sure there's any clear communication. What we had, what.
If I can make a comment. The Gilds are getting ready to sell the Lemon Tree.
Because of that?
No. That was, that was, they've been told that that was their plan to sell, to sell the building with, without parking out in front. They believe the value of the building is reduced, the value of the business is reduced. At this time, they don't have an easy path from their parking lot to the front. The parking lot is indeed gravel, and it's a grass path to the front, and then apparently a number of their clientele have mobility issues, which makes that difficult to deal with. They have been working with their neighbor about dropping off just down the street from their sort of parking to help deal with some of their clients that come, with transport that drops them off. But I think, if you remember, they did come back in March, and both the Lemon Tree and the Empire were concerned about lack of parking in front of their businesses. It's a disincentive to their business.
We had, we had committed not only to, there were a couple of things that we did tell them what we could do. And one was they were concerned about the placement of the tree in front of their property. Really, it was only four or five feet they're asking for. And then there was, they wanted to make sure there was no parking just around the corner on their street, right across from the convenience store, and so we were going to panic her. But in terms of the actual parking spots, we didn't, didn't agree to that, but we said it's okay to unload right there. There's no law against that. You can unload right there. It's just a concern is the folks unloading may not want to park there because it could be dangerous. So those were the three things that they had asked for originally.
Councilor Peterson?
I guess as long as it's during the pod. Traffic lights, I had a question. Maybe this is the right, maybe it's not the right time to bring this up. A lot of complaints on the lights going across Twelve, I mean, what are your thoughts on that? I, I, it'll stay red forever, then I just could drive through it and say, the heck with it, you know?
Yeah, they have, they've got work to do on that scene. So they're working on it. Signals, I mean, I don't think the video camera's working right on those. And to, because, and then the default should be green on College Avenue. When there, where no traffic, it's cross-traffic, and it's green on the cross. So they've got a lot of work to do.
So they're aware of it?
They've been made aware of it.
Yeah, okay.
That's fine.
It's also on our substantial list, completion list. In other words, we don't give them substantial completion until those things are timed according to our contract. Now, that said, that may not be the best, most appropriate. Like you say, once you get into a project, once you actually see how it's operating, sometimes you want to step back and reevaluate. And this contract, to answer your question, would allow us, the way I have it constructed, optionally to look at the signal timing if we felt that it was going to be enough of an impact, but we wouldn't have to. We can do it separately.
Okay. So the street timing really is being done as part of this construction? This is if we need to reassess?
Done. Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, you know, we could talk about this for an hour, you know, going back and forth on how we got into this mess and so forth in this, this area, these blocks that we're talking about. I can't remember how I, how I agreed to the configuration, but I do know enough about construction and street construction and stuff, because I've worked in my life in construction in general, to know that what it looks like is that to accommodate pedestrian traffic, we made it more dangerous for our main thoroughfare, which had more traffic than Myra Road. And so we narrowed the road down. Now, the parking areas got narrowed, the lanes got narrowed up to Tenth Street and certain areas. There are areas between Ten and Lemon Tree, I've measured it. But the main question is, we can't do anything about the curbing now in and with this street. But the main question, I mean, if you look at, and the reason why I say we made it more dangerous is because you can't park a UPS truck here and a USPS truck on the other side, a white one, and then expect two buses to go in between them. I followed buses up and down, up and down, to see what their habits are and what their accommodations are, how they're adjusting and stuff. They can't do it. They're not following anything. They're just doing whatever. They're stopping and waiting. And so what we did, you know, we talked, like I said, we talked about that online, how we got into this predicament. But my question is, is do we really need to make, spend money on a study in order to make the practical adjustments?
You don't need to? I mean, you can mandate that in terms of what you want to do. The concern I would have would be, and maybe it's, maybe it's, doesn't rise to a level of concern, but there is, there is a safety element. It'd be nice to have somebody weigh in on that part for your decision in terms of how you want to move forward. And there may be a way to stripe it that improves things. There's finessing that we maybe will do that makes it all work, maybe? I don't know. So that's the inquiry. But we could go out and just get rid of the left turn lanes. I mean, I don't think that that's, I would advise that, I wouldn't recommend that, but you could.
Yeah, just from a practical point of view, and I understand why we looked at a piece of paper and said, it looks good on paper. We didn't really try anything, you know, and know how it'd work in real life, but it just looked good on paper when we approved the design and so forth. But, you know, when you, when you drive it, and I think it's more than just getting used to new configurations, it's, it's a practical matter of whether it's safe, you know, at thirty miles an hour, you know, and narrowing the street down where there's not room for four vehicles to get across each other. I think one thing we need to think about is, do we really need a left turn lane heading east on the Tenth Street? That's hardly more than an alleyway, you know, and hardly anybody uses that. So I would, my question is, is could we give you some direction on repainting and restriping? That would reflect maybe the recommendation of a committee? Maybe get the police department down on it, get some council, get community members, make a recommendation on how to restripe that so that we're all together?
My recommendation is that you do have a transportation expert look at it, just so that you have that in case there are accidents or something and.
But, but, I understand, but how those got put in there wasn't the recommendation of the traffic study engineer, it was our request, right?
What they did is they took your, well, at least the preference at that time in terms of how to balance those, and then they designed it to that. And so that's a reflection of that. A couple of other things too, just to, the, this weaving, I've heard it from my wife too, so it's, you know, it's an obvious concern out there. It's, it's interesting that some of the philosophies for streets, especially downtown streets, are looking at traffic calming, which is, you put the bolt outs, you don't make it so, you make it so people have to actually investigate their way down the road. So I think it's over in Wawa, they have one that's similar to that now.
Division.
Division. I start seeing more of that. And what it does is it slows traffic down at some level. And at least it should. If it doesn't, you're right, it's going to be dangerous. And there's a whole part of the planning world that likes that because it means people are more attracted to going to businesses and they see things in windows, and so it's a balance. And we are at a point where it's probably the best time to revisit it, given a few more weeks or months, to take a look and see how it's working, how it went before.
Ms. Silk?
I think that we, before we do any sort of change, we really need to take some data. There is a traffic calming effect, i.e. a slowing effect of having the weaving in and out. I do teach an introduction to transportation engineering class, and one of the things that we talk about regularly are how, with all the goodwill in the world, people make what seem like practical decisions, but without making, looking at the whole picture, they end up actually making it even worse. So I would strongly recommend that if we're going to make changes to what was designed by a traffic engineer, we can give new direction and say, we've decided parking is a higher priority, but then ask them to come up with a design that meets that, that looks at the entire picture. Because I'm afraid that we would be taking on some pretty severe liability if we just make changes without a professional engineer actually looking at the whole picture and making a design.
Mr. Peterson?
I appreciate that, and I respect it, but what we're trying to understand is, what kind of a situation are you in if you need to spend twenty-five thousand dollars to make, to hear an engineer tell you that you don't need a left turn lane into Tenth Street heading east because it's hardly more than an alleyway? It's just really narrow. Two cars can't hardly go up and down that street as they enter, and it's rough and it's not used hardly at all. Just in a practical point of view, what kind of, what kind of professional opinion do you need to correct that?
Well, I think it might ensure that. Just one intersection that we're talking about. I mean, I agree with you on 10th, but, I mean, I think that part of the study, Ms. Sully can probably tell us more, that they're looking at the whole picture of the city with the increased traffic to the high school, increased traffic as, hopefully enrollment goes up at the university, all these different things that are affected, that we can't know, but that their models are set up to tell us and they can run, you know, with these increases, you know, how things are going to change. And I think that's what I'm hoping that we've been paying for, but I agree that I think that would be a couple of months down the road.
Since I live at the end of 10th, not quite at the end, but that's how I go home, is down that street. It is very narrow and I'm surprised no one's ended up in the creek yet. But there's starting to be more and more, I don't know, people have moved in at the end or like have a social life or something. There's starting to be a lot more traffic down to the end of the road, so it gets more use than we might think. I always go 12th if I have to turn left, because I, I try to avoid lefts away from a line anyway, but you know, that's just...
Where I live and have lived for 15, 20 years, I always had to use 10th Street too on College Avenue. That was just my main direct line. I never went that way. It was just too awful, too dangerous, really.
Do you need, do you need direction on this right now, or do you want to just think about it for a while?
We're at your beck and call. If you want us to proceed with the study right now, then we, this is a request for direction on whether we should issue an RFP for a study. And we can defer, we can, you know...
There's no bounds.
How long does it take from RFP till when you would be ready to do the study?
I would give us probably a month. I mean, probably...
However long?
Yeah, we can, we can delay as long as necessary, but probably at the earliest, by the time we get our advertising, we probably want to do it at least two weeks, maybe three, after rank them, so we're probably at least a month out.
It's about a, 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 RFP cycle's six to eight weeks, just to get in and get them evaluated.
So I would be prepared to move that we, that we authorize staff to issue an RFP, provided the actual traffic counts parts don't happen until there's reason to believe that traffic is stabilized.
Ms. Clark?
I have a question. Where are we on the final completion of this project?
We already had changes. We already had the ribbon cutting, so...
Mr. Hartwig, would you, would you care to share where we are?
Well, depending on weather, you know, they've got basically from 12th Street south to finish all the tree wells and that concrete work in that area. Again, we want to deal with the timing of the, I mean, the operation of the signals. It's not so much a timing issue there on those two, it's an operation issue, and that needs to be taken care of. And then we haven't, we've given them a punch list, a pretty substantial punch list from the start of the project at Grove Street all the way to...
There's one of us, like, 4th.
4th, I think.
Yeah.
And then the weather started before we even got down to the south. So there's, there's still quite a bit of time.
Because I just remember dodging around scouting trucks and some things just before the snow came. You never really had a feel...
That's right.
...of a nice, clear traffic flow yet.
I think that's, I think that's the biggest hindrance to get a, getting a normal flow is still the contract.
Because they were prepared for the first snow, putting in those sidewalk areas around the tree. And so I personally don't even have a feel for what it's like when it's a finished street.
Yeah, and it will, it will be a little wobbly.
So I'm thinking of this really as kind of premature. I'd like to see the project completed and signed up and then have some time for, for people to really get a feel of the street. But, you know, I've learned how to maneuver. And it seems the flow okay, but it does feel tight. I don't know, I just think this is a little premature.
Was a motion made?
A motion was made. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Sherman?
Mike had been on this at something.
Yeah, I was, I just wanted to add some additionally to the snap to portray that it just had to do with the lemon tree, but when I was talking over at Baker Boyer Bank, because they've been closed, I think it's important to find out why they pulled out of it here. And one of the things that surprised me, and I'm not sure how the built environment was when they were operating in here, but one of the things that they mentioned was basically taking away of parking and then it felt that it lowered their footprint. And they basically, that was one of the reasons that they closed down the branch. And it's just as we're looking at trying to get our downtown going here, I think it's important to answer that question about the parking, is that something that's truly needed? Or if we do go out parking, is that going to create a rash of that down the road since Baker Boyer did that? Maybe there were other things, but I thought that was interesting in the phone conversation. That was one of the things that came up, so...
Ms. Dakersen?
I just think in this through, you know that they're going to ask you, "Well, what do you want?" And then how are you going to know what to say? Because you can do anything you want there and it's not going to be a liability. And so, so to spend that amount of money for them to come back and say, "Well, what do you want?" Yeah, we'll, we'll design a program, so you're all pretty clear. But what are we going to tell them when they say, "What do you want?"
The way, the way I think we would approach this would be to request alternatives that would emphasize each of those and see what they look like. So if we're going to do a parking friendly, what does it look like? If we're going to do, I mean, leave it the way it is, and then, and then give us what the levels of service are as a result of taking each of those different approaches. If, if you have specific direction as a council on events, we would certainly write that in. But I think, I think probably you may want more information on what the impacts are of taking any particular route before you make a decision on that. And that's what the study we're bringing to the surface. But you could, you could ask for them to focus on a particular...
It's kind of like most of us have lived here all our lives and dealt with all that all our lives and kind of know what, what the problems have been, haven't been.
Well, the two issues right now is parking and it's left turn lanes. Other than that, maybe discover other lanes, you know, but...
Speed limits as well as...
Right, yeah.
Site visibility on the corners and you have to get that...
And speed limits is another thing. We know that the speed limit on College Avenue was just a council motion. There was no study, there was no recommendation from a staff member, police department, nothing. The council member just made a motion to make it that way, and that's the way they did it.
So, Ms. Sherman?
Okay, so is there, I mean, I'm in favor of doing this when the time is right, but is that, is it okay to approve something with a gray date like that?
Why don't we motion to table it instead?
That's what I was thinking.
We could table this for like two or three months or something for a moment.
Yeah.
It's too early. So we have, we have a, we have a motion and a second.
So we have to vote on it?
We have a, we have a, we have, we have, we have a, we have that. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye. So a motion doesn't pass for...
I would like to motion to table this issue for two months.
There's, there's been a motion to table the issue for two months?
I'll second that, but I, I would add to the discussion, I don't know that it needs to be two months, it could be three or more.
We could, we can table it again.
There's been a motion to table for two months, it's been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. Ford. And you're on for C Street Dampson Cedar Avenue Right Way Acquisition.
Yes, I'm back, sorry. This is the last one tonight for me, so breathe a sigh of relief.
Promises, promises, promises.
This one should be simpler, I hope. As you know, we are, we were unsuccessful in obtaining funding for our C Street project. And we talked about it a little bit earlier in the context of complete streets. This last grant funding cycle, 2017, it will not be built. However, we're almost done with the design, we're about 90% plus, and they are poised to start property acquisition for that project. Their contract, PBS, is, includes right now property acquisition services. So we're all ready to do that, but when we got ready to pull the trigger on it, we realized we'd never come to you, the council, with permission to actually purchase the property. In other words, expend the funds to buy the property. So we're here before you tonight requesting permission or direction to go ahead and begin acquisition of property. The, the amount we originally had in the budget for this was 255,000. We've reduced that to 200,000, and in discussions with Sarah, you may have heard her talk about 50,000 of that being allocated towards, I think it was 4th Street. So we've reduced the amount because we don't think it's going to be as much. It still exceeds what the administrative office summaries add up to. We added a percentage in there. That 200,000 is over the, I think it's 169 or something like that, so that we have some room for negotiation. Because typically in land acquisition processes, there's going to be a little bit of give and take on those. So maybe more. We don't think it'll be over 200. So we're coming to you asking for approval to begin acquisition for our C Street project.
I would be authorized if expenditures of funds for right way acquisitions associated with C Street Dampson Cedar Avenue project not exceed 200,000 as laid out in Agenda Item AB 1711.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, thanking Ms. Sully and Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? That passes unanimously. Mr. Rizzatello, social media policy.
Thank you, Mayor. Agenda Bill 16014 has to do with the social media policy, and this is just governance of presences that we would have on Facebook, Twitter, other social media. This was presented before this, Bobby, the last city council meeting. The rules committee of city councils since reviewed this. I incorporated some edits that they had to this, and it is before you today. Basically, it's just that any future amendments to this would have to go through council. And then there's one or two other ones as well, but pretty minor. But this is definitely a good way to connect with the residents, is very powerful at the City of Colfax. It didn't take that much staff time either at the City of Colfax, and it was a full-service government. It came out to point one of FTE for the whole year, so it was very general. So something we really need is we're trying to build up our digital presence, so it's pretty exciting.
Questions from Mr. Rizzatello.
I really appreciate this and, and...
Go ahead.
Okay. Anyway, I appreciate your initiative here, and I'm glad we're doing this, because so many cities and entities are using information. I mean, I'm looking at a lot of this stuff just on social media, they're, they're right on the money, they're faster than anybody. Newspaper, even the newspapers use it, you know, and to get their information out there is fast, you know. But you see counties using it for the road conditions, you see police departments using it for lost, stolen things, you know, and all kinds of things. States are using it.
Mr. Bob?
Yeah, I was just wondering how this relates to our public comment section of our meetings? And if that, because I'm sure that this is going to generate a lot of comment from the community, and how is that information going to come from those sites to these meetings?
Well, I can, I can, I can really answer what we did at Colfax, because actually there were not as many comments, first of all, as one would think, because that was the concern over there. When there was comments, there's a third-party open source program called HootSuite that aggregates those comments, and you can actually print it up in a report. So that's what was done in Colfax. You would think a lot of people made comments, but actually it's more so about reading the news and, "Hey, is this road closed? Is this me?" Then, hey, and then it's more so of a news source than folks griping about the issues, so...
We use this, I use this a fair amount at the county health department. And got great, actually not a lot of feedback, just a lot of positive, "Thanks for the info" kinds of, kinds of things. And usually it was, most of it ended up directing people to another source of information.
Get your flu shots.
Get your flu shots, whatever the case may be.
Your primary sources would be what?
Facebook, Twitter, overtime YouTube as well. Those are the primary sources. And then keep in mind, unless it can be proven that there's a deep demand for it, just that all the departments share that page, because if you split it out too much, you split the audience and it becomes weak. City of Beaver, then where I worked at, had a population of about 94,000. They split their audience and they made it where all the departments went back to having one unified page.
So you get Twitter notice when our street is being plowed with snow? We got to be...
I mean, I mean, honestly, as far as posting the snow plow routes and common information like that, that, that would be the goal.
Mr. Cleveland?
This might be a little bit outside the policy, but one thing that's kind of struck me is like, you know, this is a great way to reach our constituents. You know, we have a public comment section at every meeting. Have we, and most of this sounds like it's kind of unit directional, this is information you can have. Are there any considerations for making an open question? Do you have any comments for the city? And then say, bring whatever gets posted to the council. We might end up with a vocal minority of such from time to time, but has there been any thought about that or consideration for...
I did think about that. At the City of Colfax, we actually did pose those questions and then got a couple of comments back once it was actually posed as an actual question. So whenever we have issues come up like that, yeah, the thought would be oppose the question and folks could either tweet or write a message on Facebook back.
I will say, when I requested input in the utility bills in the mayor's monthly message, I got three.
Three.
So... Well, if you're already on Facebook, it, I think, takes a lot less effort to just click enter, enter, you know?
Yeah, the, the one thing that I will add is, we'll just be able to get a lot more folks this way through Facebook, because even in a place such as Colfax, you would think people would read more so the newspaper or things like that. It is getting to the point where a paper has actually taken some of the stories from our pages. And by the time I left on the Facebook page for City of Colfax, we had a thousand likes on it, which for a city that only has 2,800 folks, that's not bad.
Ms. Sherman?
I would move to approve resolution number 17-002, social media policy.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion?
I'll, I do have a question. Mr. Dakersen? I think there's already a page called College Place. What are you going to do for a name for your sites on social media?
That is just a generalized page that Facebook comes up with when, for instance, folks say, "Hey, I live in College Place." If you click on that, you'll just see post the random folks who are in College Place put. When you create the page, you classify it as a municipal... When you create the page, you classify it as a municipal government and that just automatically aggregates everything.
And they sometimes see official...
Yeah.
The official.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes unanimously. Administrative Reports. Chief Benfield.
Good evening. We were approached by Wall Wall University that federally they're required to have basically until about eight degrees of the city. It's called a memorandum of understanding for agency assistance. The college originally put this together, not on the form that you have, but they put this together and they gave them some authorization. This is the one I sat down and hashed this out and made this so that this was pretty amicable between the college and us, where it doesn't limit our powers to any way of following up the university. It does open up the opportunity for the university's security staff to assist us should we need that. Once in a while, when we're dealing with like parties and things like that, it's nice to have that available. So this understanding just basically sets out a guideline or some rules that, that we both can abide by when working on some sort of an incident at the college. What it doesn't do is, it doesn't take away the immediate advertising powers or the wish of investigation from that law or the university. So we've met with Courtney Bryant, Campus Security. He's signed off on this. He's perfectly fine with the form that we have now. And I think it's beneficial to both the college and us. Provides for some training. The security staffs next to give them some of our training. And we can teach them the way that we'd like them to handle some incidents. For instance, if they get a vehicle foul or a burglary or sexual assault or something like that on campus, it gives them some guidance on how they can proceed with that. So that's kind of why we came up with this. I think we've got a pretty good lock down on this.
Questions for Chief Benfield.
I just had a comment. I did like the phrase in here, and I don't know what it was before, or what this looked like before, but where it said that any crime reported to the university's security must be reported immediately to the College Police Department. I appreciate this because I, just in some of the other news comments where there've been colleges where things have just have not been reported. So hopefully, they will do their jobs and do that, but I appreciate it.
That has been kind of an ongoing problem of, a lot of the students like to report things to campus security. And it never gets in turn past us. We don't want the crimes to happen. We don't do saturation patrols or anything. So the purpose we're going to put that there so that it does push them to, to let some of those things happen.
Thank you.
Since you're mentioning 15 there, about any crime being reported to them needs to be reported to us, like what happens if that doesn't occur?
Well, there's technically no penalty for that. I think more than anything, it just pushes them or encourages them to...
Gives me an opportunity to talk with Dr. McVay about their, their staff protecting their students.
If we find out that that's going on, that they're taking all the students that are reporting crimes and it's not getting reported to us, we refer back to this agreement and we probably have a meeting with Courtney and the college staff.
Perhaps a automatic, you know, weekly or, well, I guess if there were something serious, we want it to be instant. So maybe just in our discussions, having, you know, it'd be very automatic, you know, as part of a protocol if they have. I think would be...
Ms. Sherman?
Well, and I appreciate this. And one mechanism that you might use to check how well it's being enforced is there is, we get once a year, apparently, a federally mandated report on all the crimes that, that they know about that happened on campus. And so comparing, if you can get that report and compare it to what they told you, that might be useful.
We actually have, and there was some discrepancies in that. That's been a discussion with, I know the detective is kind of busting that side.
Any further questions or comments for Chief Benfield? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Rizzatello.
Agenda Bill 17013. This is just to give an introduction of this. And please let me know if you have any thoughts or comments. This will be brought forward in a future city council meeting. This is for the addition of Chapter 3.42 Lodging and Excise Tax. Currently, we don't have one at books primarily because we don't really have lodging establishments in this city. However, there are Airbnbs. And additionally, there are basically two companies that are looking potentially to put in a hotel within the City of College Place. As far as basically my experience over in Colfax, it's going to get this on the books as you're doing the deal with them. Because otherwise, it turns into a whole thing of, oh, now you're putting a tax on me. But everyone has this, including the City of Wall Walla and Wall Walla County. The nice part about the money collected for lodging taxes isn't a grab like by the general fund or anything. It goes into a restricted hotel motel fund and is primarily to drum up tourism activities. So if we eventually get a downtown foundation, which I'm hopeful, since we have the commission and they'll be working toward that, we will. Wayfinding or to provide seed money for events to draw people in the city. This is the way all cities do that. The City of Colfax is very successful. And we just really need to get some on books here so that way when hotels come in, they know the protocol, the tax is already on the books, and it's good. The only thing is, we had to, in this proposal, put in the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee because in Colfax, we had that merged as part of the ed tech. However, because this is a non-charter code city and there's other requirements in there, we can't, we couldn't merge both of them. So there has to be an LTAC separate of that. So in this proposal, it said 4%. So 2% is regular lodging tax and another 2% is special hotel motel tax. And that gets credited against retail tax. It could be collected via that way, except it gets put in the hotel motel fund, so.
Earlier, we were talking about the Commission for Tourism and Development type stuff. And some question was brought up about the, the funding of that. Could any of this tax be used to fund, say, travel expenses that was, say, a concern?
Yes, it could. In this packet, there's a draft application and an agreement. And basically, the Economic Development Commission could fill that out and then the LTAC could review it. And then they, in essence, give the recommendations of what to award the applications. And then the city council can either say yes or no, and then it would be remanded back.
Ms. Sherman?
Comment and a question. The, in the alumni center at the university, they do have three rooms that they rent out. So you care what... Don't be hitting my group over there. No, kidding. We'd be happy to collect money. Well, and I don't know, is it the alumni that runs that now? Okay. I wasn't sure if it was alumni of the university. And secondly, I, I'm confused about the first 2%, which is deducted from the amount the seller would otherwise be required to collect and pay the Department of Revenue. What's that amount of the seller would otherwise be required to collect to pay? I'm confused by that.
That is the ability within the 2% to just be collected as a general sales tax. Instead, that 2% basically gets collected and then gets collected as a special hotel motel tax and then put within the fund. That's an additional mechanism for lodging that, from your retail sales tax, it could be just deposited within the general fund if, like, an ordinance was passed saying, hey, we're collecting this for the general fund. But in this case, you're, you're going to collect it, but it's going to go to the hotel motel fund.
So when I look at my, if I was staying in a hotel in College Place someday, and I look at my bill, I would see sales tax of whatever, and then I would see a 2% hotel motel. But out of that sales tax, 2% would come to us behind the scenes. And then the, the 2% that's called out as a hotel motel tax is the rest of the 4%.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I was just struggling.
Ms. Sherman?
So being a representative of, apparently, the only place in town that does red town rounds, do, how, maybe I'll just talk to you about it later. Never mind, I don't understand. But obviously, we'll need to be paying that if it's going to be...
By the way, Mr. Dakers. By the way, a few years ago, Kathy was still here, she flushed out a few people that were actually operating as bed and breakfasts because she saw them advertising.
This is great. Thank you for doing the research and work on this.
Any further questions? Mr. Rizzatello. Board docs.
Okay. The next two agenda items is just really to get a feel of the council for these two items and if we should go after them or do additional research or not pursue them at all. This came about because I was watching staff put together and print all the documents for council meetings. And that takes a lot more time than one would think and it's a pretty arduous process. Whereas previously, we just threw everything online, so I inquired about that and it really wasn't looked deeply into. So since that time, Lisa has greatly helped me look into these options. And this Board Docs Agenda software just allows you to easily post agenda bills and do it, do it within a pretty simple process within their program, Last Cities. And governmental agencies across the country use this. The closest one to us at this moment is the City of Othello. They use it very successfully. Year to year's $3,000 at us. And then there's a $1,000 setup fee. Lisa and I, we watched a demonstration of this program. Works well with, with our needs very well. Do you have some to add?
Well, I also spoke with the clerk from Othello. And they've been on this program since 2010, and she sings its praises. And she said that the, the staff with Board Docs are over-the-top helpful for setting it up. And it would be set up basically in our format. They would customize it to our format, so everything would be very familiar and very similar. It would just be electronic format instead of the paper, which would help in, the, the biggest problem with the paper is, you guys see, you get additional pieces of paper on your desktops because mistakes are found or additional information is discovered after the fact. And the, the time consumption process for getting it finalized, approved, and then printed, and then, oh, wait, we have an addition here or we have a change here, can be very cumbersome. Where with this program, if something's changed, you just go in and update it and boom, everybody has it.
Will it alert us to changes?
Yes, I will, I will.
So is this where we log into a site and read it? Or is it via email? Or how does that work?
It would be, it's a cloud-based program and it would be accessed through our website. And we can, we can have different levels where you guys would have your login as a council member.
Right.
And then if there's things that council members need to see that the public doesn't necessarily need to see, there's not very many being us, being a government agency. But we do have the ability to restrict certain things to only council.
Councilmen?
I seem to recall an email that mentioned an iPad. Was that a...
Oh, that's going to be the next agenda bill.
That is the next item.
I'm getting ahead of myself.
You read it, you read the agenda.
I just wanted to clarify that this, the materials would apparently mostly be available to the public online? Because I know they're...
They are currently. They are currently.
They are? Okay.
And when this packet, I do the packet electronically and in paper. The electronic version I can update as soon as an update happens. The paper version, you guys wait for the updates until the meeting. But it would, it would be basically the same, same visually, just much easier for staff-wise for putting it together.
I would just like to add a little bit to that. Right now, if you go on a website and you download the agenda packet, you click on it and the whole thing comes up, which is a couple hundred pages. Within this Board Docs, you're able to essentially set it up to where it segregates the stuff based by agenda bill numbers. So let's say you want to read 015. You click that, you just see that. You don't have to scroll up and down and it's on the theme. So that's the nice part about this program.
And are the pages that you put in, are they, they're not like frozen PDFs, but they're like, so you can change the size and stuff? And it's not like this whole page is on a screen regardless of how bad your eyes are?
I would assume with the iPad, you can, can enlarge just like, like any...
Well, because there's, there's like the ebook stuff where you can enlarge and stuff. And then there's just a straight PDF where, you know, you can zoom, but then it doesn't scroll or anything. And so you have to wiggle all around it. It's very difficult. So that would be something to look at. I should come in and show you what I mean on my reader if you want.
And that would also depend on the size of, right, of iPad that we would be talking about next.
Ms. Sherman, and then Mr. Bob.
Is this the, I remember, I asked you about this a couple weeks ago, if we have little, because every once in a while, when I'm reading through, I make notes. Is this the same program that would allow me to like make little notes?
Yeah.
And then if changes happen, would my notes, my notes would stay there, right? Okay.
Yeah, I have to double check that piece.
Would it be possible to demonstrate it for us sometime?
Yeah.
It'd be nice to see it.
Definitely. So we're going to see.
Yeah.
This might be a dangerous question, but if, say, someone prefers a hard paper copy, would that be available? Or are you going to like throw me outside? Me to the curb?
You can press whatever you want. You wanted to bring it to your dorm room for dinner?
You walked right into that one.
Yeah, I did.
It did say in the information in the packet that if your council members want paper, it is fairly easy to print from.
Yeah.
Mr. Dakers. So are we discussing electronic council packets now?
No, we don't have software. Board docs. I mean, yeah. Are we still on Board Docs?
Well, right now, we're still on Board Docs. I mean, I, I view both these agenda bills as somewhat married together because one is the software to deploy and the other one is the hardware to essentially look at it, so.
Oh, okay. Then what I would say in relation to the, the council packets and electronic... I know at least three council members and probably maybe four, but I'm just guessing three, that are leaning towards wanting to stay with paper. So I wonder if we'd, we'd have a demonstration or walk up or have a, have a committee that sorts a lot of this stuff out? Because I have a lot of questions about that. I was, I was all for it at first, but the more I get to thinking about the practicality, like Lauren just said, screen is harder to write on, make notes. It doesn't have to be. The other, there's people. And, and you know, one thing to keep in mind is that it shouldn't just be for us that are currently on the council. It should be for all councilmen. It could be for people like maybe Marge or somebody that isn't familiar with the system in the future at some point.
Councilman, yourself?
Well, although these are closely related, maybe they're just living together, not married yet. quite married yet, I don't know. It seems to me from what I read that the Board Docs would be really, really useful even if we don't go to the electronic packet.
Yes. For the creation part of the packet itself.
And the web presence of the packet. So I don't think by saying yes to Board Docs, we are automatically saying yes to electronic.
Right. Good point. Which is why they're separate. Councilman Bob.
You know, I want to veer a little bit off our topic here, but you did mention that right now, you do have electronic copies of our packets available on our website.
That's how I read it yesterday.
I've been trying to find it. I get the agenda.
Would you like me to show you?
An improvement. I can't get.
This is what we voted for, a redesign of our website, right?
Okay.
Oh, sure.
It took forever to download my 243 pages using the Ontario Airport internet, but it worked.
By the way, it's more waiting. I'll show you. I asked MRC about the legality and so forth, the receiving passive information from the city and he said, there's no problem. We can use our own iPads.
So if you go here to agenda minutes.
And there's nothing wrong with receiving that. It's not discussion, it's not business to do it that way.
Then most recent agenda, most recent council packet.
Was that added recently? The council packet?
That's been added since I've been here.
Oh, okay. I remember.
And so then it's right there. You can click on it.
And then could you get to the details or is that just the cover page?
No, there's 243 pages.
Yep. The whole thing.
So do you have to scroll through it or?
I do have, I'm not familiar with, I do have this particular one. I have bookmarks, but I don't see where to.
So we're licensed to.
Find the bookmarks.
So we can put notes here or?
Yeah, and save it to your computer. You save it in Adobe.
It's after the fact.
These, these aren't editable on the, the other end PDF.
I mean, you could save it on your own computer and then make comments to yourself using the comment app. So it's not completely locked.
But you can, there's a way of inserting a comment.
Mark of tools.
Yeah, mark it up.
I see.
I like that because right now we're pulling documents out of here that we took notes on and you're trying to purge your, you know.
The idea of using Board Docs makes, well, if you remember, if you remember the budget presentation, we had, we had a file of paper equal in height to the notebooks just based on the changes. You know, they estimated here that we're talking about, you know, $5,000 for 2016. I think that's a really conservative estimate of how much we spend putting packets together.
And that, yeah, that's only the paper part. That doesn't include, you know, that doesn't include putting it together. That includes, it's about half an hour of driving time, but.
You know, it's, you're talking a couple hours of delivery, but the issue is that that's just the assemble.
Just the assembly, printing and the assembly of the paper itself.
Just one, a couple of comments on, this is the only city I know that delivers them to council members using the mail amount or they have mailboxes at City Hall and it's council members coming in and get them.
Tell me.
But we appreciate it.
Well, we are a small city. Any other questions on Board Docs?
And I believe if you guys want to, I believe in the webinar that we went to, I believe she said that she would be happy to demonstrate for council.
Yeah, it said that we get a one to two hour training or something.
Yeah, well, I think even if you desire.
Even if you haven't decided yet, if you want just a review, a presentation, they're willing to do that.
That'd be nice. Yeah, that'd be really nice.
So did everybody see how Lisa went from the front to the back? Just with that slider on the side?
Yeah. And if you're looking at it in Adobe, I mean, with Board Docs, it's much simpler, but in Adobe, I do have bookmarks set up with the agenda bill items. It's just easier. Board Docs will make it simpler. So if you guys would like, we can try and set up a presentation maybe at the next meeting.
I think that would be great for a workshop. Yeah. I think this is one of those agenda items, you have a second reading. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, you know, this is an information.
Yes, it's information.
I mean, if you present it on the agenda, just have it as a first time without action. So we can see the demonstration, ask all the questions, sort it out as a council of the whole. Any further questions? Next item.
Okay. The next item is the iPads for council packets. So Lisa did some research on what's available and there's several options out there should say council desire to go this route. Through the Apple Government Store, you can get a 9.7 inch screen for $5.75 apiece. 12.9 goes for $968 apiece and then there's option, there's options in between. Some of the Amazon ones, I'll just caution as far as the maintenance and breakdowns on those. I personally have had bad luck on those. I know as far as the maintenance through the Apple Government Store previously in Colfax, we went there, but they were very good about that when it broke, getting it fixed and back, so those are the.
Can I make a comment on that? When, when I've broken my phone and it's been under with, under with Apple Care, I call them, they, they require a deposit, but they put a phone in the mail the day you call and it's overnighted to you. So you literally, I've literally been without a phone for a day with Apple and then they credit your card back when you're, when the other one arrives back. So I mean, they're. Their customer service as far as repairs, excellent.
I think for this application, I think a keyboard is real useful to be able to make notes, et cetera. I don't have, as far as I'm concerned, the smaller size is fine, but the keyboard is really, because without the keyboard, it's really hard to make notes. In theory, you can, but my thumbs get tired.
What size is that, Jerry?
Ten inches is a little cramped.
That's a 9.7.
That's a 9.7?
Yeah.
Oh, that's.
Oh, you, you need to see the 12s. It's, 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 you, you really can, the clarity on the screens.
Do you use the iPad Pro?
No. I'm waiting.
That's what I use and it's, they claim it's as clear as it can get, the clarity and the resolution is as good as reading paper. And it's got 125 gigabytes and it's about the same size as the.
It's about, well, basically what you're getting.
They sell for about $5.75 new. $6.50 is what I made.
Yeah, I think, well, the 12.9 without a keyboard is $800.
Yeah. But, but I can get them for a lot less. New ones.
So when are we moving forward on this? I noticed it's still an action item.
Well, I would really say it's up to the body how quickly you move forward on this. I was thinking likely items such as this in Board Docs, it'd be good maybe for a deeper discussion, a workshop of some sort. Harvey, is that your?
Exactly. Yeah. I think you just, we wanted to introduce you, give you an idea.
Yeah, this was more so an introduction.
Here's the cost. We need to, we need to, the, we really need to get your honest whether you would, whether you would use these. We could, you know, we can certainly do a demo in Board Docs. I don't have a, I don't have even a 9.7 iPad anymore because I used, I've got a little teeny tiny one, but.
I'd be able to use my, my own device, like my own laptop. So I wouldn't necessarily need one.
I, I would, I think the Board Docs is more urgent than the devices because I do feel bad, I always feel bad when I get my packet because I've spent many years putting them together. I just like, so I would like to see us move kind of quickly on that piece.
And I'd also like to see a comparison between the cost of Board Docs and existing system, I shouldn't say Board Docs, but devices for transportation.
You've got it right there under.
Now, the next page has the council packet clause.
Well, we got a new one tonight.
This one, this cap is a seventeen, what is it? Seventeen zero one four is, the last page of that is, is approximation of council clause.
Oh, no, sorry. That wasn't there.
And then zero one five has the, basically just kind of a shopping list of the.
In the email received, this is, these will remain city property.
You're getting, you're getting close to a refurbished Mac Air with a keyboard in it.
I mean, maybe this is more workshop or you feel like we do, because I guess I'm looking at a device like this as something that I would be able to keep all the other committee stuff that I'm on and have everything together because right now it's kind of over cooking my office. But that would kind of move toward if we had an email thing, that that stuff would kind of be saved there too and we wouldn't have to worry about our own personal devices being subjected.
Right.
I like that. I want that right now.
And like I was saying, MRC says that the personal devices are not subject to the, to the.
Not given public meetings there.
The public record. If you're just passively receiving.
Right, exactly.
If and only if. It's what? A packet.
Any further questions on that? So I would, it is nine thirty. I would like to go into executive session. So Ms. Nysel, Gordon, Miss Strang needs to stay. Mr. Hartley, Chief Benfield needs to stay. We could share this guy.
Do we need disclaimer on the record? Do you have a purpose?
I do. The purpose is to, it's section M, collective bargaining sessions with employer organizations.
No, you don't need to say.
The portion of the meeting during which the governing body is planning or adopting the strategy and position taken by its collective party.
Do we need that disclaimer read into it the way that we're used to or is that?
We're going into executive session for, for ends M, section A, section B, that portion of the meeting which during the, which the governing.